Okay, seeing that it's six o'clock, I will call the Town of Webster zoning board of appeals meeting for Tuesday, April 5th, 2022 to order. The first item on our agenda is the approval of meeting minutes from February 1st. I believe that should be 2022 on the agenda? Okay. Has everybody had a chance to read those minutes? Is there a motion to adopt those minutes as written?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
Mr. Piotr?
Yes. Okay, another set of meeting minutes from March 1st, 2022. Is there a motion to adopt those minutes as written?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piotr?
Yes. Okay, moving on to our other items. Seeing that Mr. Tatro is here, the building inspector from the Town of Webster, and being respectful of his time, we are going to take 30, the appeal application from 30 Point Pleasant Road, unless there is somebody not here who is going to be here that people are aware of. Mr. Daggett, could you read the warrant for the appeal application for 30 Point Pleasant?
Hold on, I'm pulling up the, pulling up the materials now. Give me a second. The link never made it onto the page. It's this one. Okay. Nope.
I believe you clicked on 32.
Yep, my apologies.
We're keeping an eye on you.
Good, somebody's got to pay attention. Okay, so it's the first paragraph only.
In accordance with Section 650-11A of the zoning, the Webster zoning bylaw, the Webster zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on the appeal for the lack of enforcement of minimum side yard setback for a shed located at 30 Point Pleasant Road, assessors ID 48-A-47-0. Melanie Amir? Is that how you pronounce it? Imar? Imar? Trustee, 2006 Point Pleasant Realty owner applicant. Said site is located both Lake Residential and Lake Watershed Protection zoning districts.
Okay, considering there's a number of people that probably want to speak on this application, just as a procedural matter, I'll, we'll hear the town or the staff report first from Ms. Tatro and Mr., and Mr. Tatro and Ms. Morgan, then I'll allow the applicant, Ms. Amir, to make her presentation, then the respondent which, and/or the public. I'm assuming the owner of 30 Point Pleasant would like to make a statement then, and then we can allow the applicant to make a closing statement. I'd ask all persons to try to direct their questions through the chair, not to allow a lot of interparties communication and back and forth, so that we can, so we, so we don't have a side discussion, so. Mr. Tatro and Ms. Morgan, if you would.
I'm going to defer to the building commissioner. He knows more about this than I do.
Through the chair. I understand that they're trying to go for lack of enforcement, but the account of enforcement, for one, it does not require a building permit, for two, there was a pre-existing shed there and was removed, replaced. It does have a different roof line, and I did ask the owners to put a gutter on it to make sure the water doesn't go on the other people's property, but, I mean, you're allowed to remove and put back where it was because it was pre-existing, so.
Okay.
Where, where is, what structure are we talking about on, through the chair, on 30 Point Pleasant? Are you circling it, Ian, with your cursor?
That's the one, yes.
Okay.
Next to the two cars in the driveway, that's it.
Okay. There was a photo from 2019 as well showing that, not there?
This is, okay, so this is 2013.
Mm-hmm.
Showing the shed there. This is 2015, showing the shed here. The shadows are blocking it. This is 2019, showing the shed, and we don't have 2021 on there.
Okay. So, what bylaw would the, was the applicant allowing, requesting that you enforce?
Not sure, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I mean, they called to have me enforce it and have her remove it, but, again, like I said, and I, I, I'm almost positive I told them the same thing, it was something pre-existing that was taken out and replaced. She could take it out, she has two years to put it back, so.
Right, so it's just basically just they wanted the shed removed?
Yeah, there's no enforcement that I could do.
Okay.
It's the, I just pulled up the covered letter from the applicant's attorney, and it looks like it's the side yard setback, the 10-foot side yard setback they're referring to.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, any other questions from the board for Mr. Tatro? Okay. So we'll hear from the applicant at this point, Mr. or Mrs. Amir or her, assuming it's her attorney tonight, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Henry Lane, and I'm here on behalf of Melanie Amir, the applicant. I suspect you have the petition in front of you, so you have an idea why we're here, but the simple, simple issue is that the people at 30 Point Pleasant put a shed, built a shed last year about maybe one foot from the property line, and your bylaws, as I understand, that require that side lot setbacks be at least 10 feet. So by our measure, this shed is about nine feet too close to the property line, which is a problem for a number of reasons. You know, the one that is immediately a problem is that the roof sloped toward the Amir property, so all the, whatever rain hit the roof would immediately slide off onto the Amir property. They did put, tried to put up a gutter as of about a week ago, I guess, at the suggestion of the building inspector, and we certainly appreciate that, but the gutter just runs the water over land, ends up in the same place, so it really doesn't solve the problem. And then, you know, just to exacerbate the annoyance, now that the shed is there, the owners decided that's a really great place to store their stuff, so now we have a wheelbarrow, debris, and various other stuff on that one foot between the shed and the property line. So now we get not only the shed, we get all the debris and the junk behind the shed on the property line. Now we're on the property line because there's only a foot of space between the shed and the property line. So it's just, just getting worse. But the fundamental question is, the issue is the same. Your bylaws require a 10-foot setback. This is setback one foot. It's got to move nine feet off the, an additional nine feet off the property line. I'm not sure why there's, why it's an issue. Mr. Tatro is correct, it's a small enough shed, it does not need a building permit, but that's not an issue. You can't violate the zoning bylaws just because the building doesn't need a building permit. The zoning is zoning. It doesn't matter how small the structure is, it can't be within 10 feet of the property line. It's, that's your bylaw. You know, we didn't make it up.
So assuming the respondent cites this two-year period where they're allowed to replace a structure that was taken down, how would you counter that defense if that is in fact a valid bylaw?
Well, the shed, the shed that was taken down was built in 2018, so that, that shed was illegal as well. So we're replacing, you don't, you don't get grandfathering rights by replacing an illegal shed with another illegal shed. That was, that was a temporary, it actually wasn't even a full shed, it was a sort of a lean-to, it was a three-sided structure. It wasn't even a full shed, but that was a temporary structure, it was built in 2018. It was supposed to leave when the, when the owner left, unfortunately, they left it. The current owner apparently disposed of it and built a, built a new, a new shed, but, you know, there's no grandfather rights there. You know, they're not there nearly long enough to get any grandfather rights from zoning. You'd need at least 10 years.
All right. So are there photos of the before and after that you have, or?
We don't have any photos, unfortunately. We have plenty of photos of the shed as it is, but I don't think there's any dispute as to what, where it is. We have a picture of it being built last year.
All right, but now we're getting into, did she replace with a, you know, called a like-for-like, or did she alter the structure? Which you said a lean-to, to a shed.
We have a picture of the shed that was there before. That was built in 2018.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, these will have to be entered into the record.
Okay.
I mean, you can hand it to them, but I'll have to keep it afterwards.
Do you have a picture of the current shed, or? Just so my, my own mind, I can make a comparison.
Most of the, the property was, I could have.
Through the chair, I do have a question, and, and I think Dan may think of this also. Do we have any, do you, do you have any documentation of the shed being built in 2018?
That's based on the representation of the person who built it. We acquired of the person who built it, the prior owner of the property, and they said they built it in 2018.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Morgan, what was the first photo that you had of the, of the over, over aerial view? That went back to?
This goes back to 2013.
13. In 2013, there is a structure there.
I'm not, you know, I don't know what was there in 2013.
Okay, that's, that's fair enough. Well, it could been that it was taken down in between, for all I know.
It could have been, it could have been a structure for a second year.
I don't have all the properties memorized on the lake. So to summarize your argument, it's a legal structure that wasn't grandfathered by being present over 20 years before, it was taken down in 2018 as an illegal structure and replaced, and for those reasons, it should be taken down again?
That's essentially the case.
Okay, all right. Any other questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Faels?
When was the new shed put in?
The fall of 2021.
Okay.
I, I do have another question, just the, the shed has to be there for how long before its grandfather?
At least 10 years.
All right. So we have a picture of it being at least nine years.
I, you may, I, I don't, I don't know that.
Okay.
Sorry. And the, so the shed's been there, in theory, for a long time, nine years, we know of, possibly. Why is it now coming up, just because of the slant of the roof, because of the?
It's a, it's a bigger shed, and now the roof slopes and the water runs out.
And the gutter didn't fix that?
Well, it's hard to tell, it was just put up a couple of days ago, so.
Got it. Okay. Okay, I have no other questions. All right. I think we'll hear from the, the owner of 30 Point Pleasant, I believe. Yes, if you would, ma'am.
My name is Karen.
Yep.
You need to. My name is Karen Bockel. I've owned the property for about 17 years. That shed did not get larger, it actually got smaller, but actually, the roof line is pitched towards the property line, and it's questionable as to whether or not the insignificant amount of rainwater is negatively impacting their property because there's a line of shrubs right there. So we actually put a gutter on, and we put a downspout on that the water is coming into my yard. Plus, again, the water coming off that shed is negligible, you can count it in gallons, and I have a lot of shrubs as well, so the downspout has been directed towards my property 100% to water my shrubs. And when I was in the process of swapping out sheds, I called Ted's office, I told him exactly what I was doing. Because the shed was not larger, he said, as long as you replace it within two years in the same location, you're okay.
Okay.
And that's precisely what I did.
Okay. I'm just doing some quick math. So you own the property since 2005? That's?
Probably.
Probably, that's about 17 years?
Yeah.
Okay. Was there a shed present at that time?
When I bought it, no.
No. Okay, so we're, we have a picture from, overhead from 2013, so about when did that shed get built?
One of the tenants built it, I can't say, 2011, 12, 13, I, I can't say for sure.
Okay.
But the historical maps clearly show that the property has had a shed on it.
So you said the size, so what was the shed beforehand, and what was the size of the shed now?
The shed beforehand was probably about seven feet longer, and it isn't a three-sided shed, it was a four-sided shed, although it didn't have a door.
Okay. So seven feet longer, and the depth was about the same, or?
No, we're, we're a good five feet smaller, if not more.
Okay. All right. Any other?
And in terms, I'd like to address a couple of other things.
Sure.
In terms of debris, we have a wheelbarrow there. If the neighbor wants us to move the wheelbarrow, we will move it, and then there's a couple of cinder blocks. But quite honestly, I can't even, I'm not going to say that they're on his property. I believe they're on my property. My yard is very tidy, so there's not debris everywhere. You could come by my property anytime, and it's always very tidy. And when you ask why now, because this is retaliatory. If you remember, I was here a couple of months ago, having to do with both my neighbors with filled-in land.
Yeah, I recall.
Yeah, it's still outstanding issue. That's why it's why now. The shed's been there, say, 10 years at a minimum, but it's a problem now, so it's all retaliation. But I made sure that I did the right thing before I put the shed there.
Any questions from the board for the owner of 30 Point Pleasant? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would any other members of the public care to speak on this appeal? Okay. Would the applicant care to make a closing remark?
Really not a lot more to say. Obviously, our case is fairly simple. If, if the, if the owner has, wants to make some sort of a defense based on statute limitations, that's their burden. As it stands, it's an illegal shed. I don't think we have enough evidence to establish that it's been there for a requisite period to establish grandfathering rights. So I think the board is bound to make its findings based on the evidence sets that we have, which is that it's currently an illegal shed, and without some concrete evidence.
And an illegal shed in Webster would be how long?
Anything that's within 10 feet of the boundary line.
And it's not, as, as a pre-existing structure, it wouldn't be grandfathered then because?
Because there's no, there's no preponderance of evidence to prove that there was a shed there more than, more than 10 years ago.
Okay.
And that's the burden of the landowner, not the applicant. All we have to establish is that the shed currently violates. If there's a defense to that violation, that burden is on the owner of the property, and the owner of the property did not provide any evidence establishing that there was a pre-existing, a pre-existing shed there 10 years ago.
Okay.
Chair?
Mr. Tatro?
The zoning determination is actually for an unpermitted structure, does not have to be 10 feet from the property line, it could be within five.
Okay. Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any questions before we close? Okay. Is there a motion to close the appeal application for 30 Point Pleasant?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion, a second, any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
Mr. Piotr?
Yes, all right, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Tatro, I appreciate your time.
No problem.
I don't see Mr. Chappell here. Is the pleasure of the board to hear the variance application for 39 Lincoln Street?
That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. Mr. Daggett, you have to read the warrant first.
In accordance with the provision of the Webster zoning bylaw, Section 650-11C, the Webster zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on a variance application for relief from minimum lot size requirements for a pre-existing non-conforming lot on property located at 39 Lincoln Street, assessors ID 27-F-24-0. The application was submitted by New Street Realty Corp. applicant-owner. Said site is located in the multifamily residential zoning district.
I don't, I don't have your name printed here, so.
I'm Paul Tong, I represent New Street Realty Corporation. I bought this property like 10 years ago, and went through the proper channels to, you know, get it approved for duplex lot.
Mr. Chairman? Well, you can speak into the microphone.
Yeah, yeah, this.
So you're going to have to sit or hold the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
This is going to go on the YouTube channels.
Yeah. We're somewhat formal, but you don't have to stand trial, you know, in front of us.
Yeah. All right. So it was approved last time, and I dropped the ball and didn't register it with the registry of deeds, busy with life in general, and so here I am, back again. Nothing has changed, everything is the same. The bylaws have changed, but I meet all the requirements for it, so I'm just reading.
All right. Except for the minimum lot size. So the surrounding area around this property, is it mainly multifamily homes?
Yes, it is.
Lot sizes are fairly similar to, are they above 12,000 square feet, or are they below 12,000 square feet that they've been built on?
I can't say for sure, but they all look more or less the same. You know, anywhere from 8,000, some maybe 12, but if you look in the neighborhood and see all the other houses, it's something that, like, really wouldn't stick out, it was something that you would expect to see.
Mm-hmm.
Because all multifamily.
All right.
Could we see a, a map?
Yeah, I had, oh, shoot, not included in that. Yes, I had gone through and done a analysis of 600 feet. That analysis you have in front of you, and the staff report, the average lot size, and I did exclude large institutional, large institutional uses, mainly St. Joseph School and Church, the County Webster Athletic Field and the Armory, which were all well over 100,000 square feet. The average residential lot within 600 feet of this is 9,164. And I will bring up the map for that, so you can see.
Thank you.
Is there a phone, please?
No.
So what's unique about this site is its small lot size, in your opinion?
Yeah, yeah, that's what, you know, the hardship is in a sense that looking for doing the duplex.
So are you deprived of all uses on the property if this application's denied? Can you do anything with it?
Well, yes, I, I could, I could do a single family, but I don't think I'm asking anything out of the ordinary for the fact of it would be fitting with the neighborhood.
All right. And you said that that neighborhood is primarily multifamily homes.
Multifamily, yes.
That use is allowed within that zoning district?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Is there, is there a house on that lot now?
No.
A breakdown.
It's, it's empty, right?
It burned down, I took it down after that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Burned down, I asked the building commissioner that question, it burned down in 2010. And I'm sorry, I can't get the surrounding area easily to show you, but this is primarily two and three-family residential neighborhood. And this lot actually originally held three family on it, and Ted had spoken to the property owner. This, the plan that was submitted as part of the application is the exact same plan that was approved by the zoning board in 2014.
Okay.
So there were no changes to, he just failed to, within statutory time, file the variance and act upon it. So he's got, you know, if he would have approved it, he would have a year and then a potential six-month extension with agreement from the board.
Not to ask another silly question, but this, the use won't create any excessive noise, dust, debris, anything that's going to harm the surrounding properties? No, okay. Yeah. Okay, any other questions from the board? All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing for 39 Lincoln Street?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, there's a sec, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
And Mr. Piotr?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Yep, thank you. You'll have a decision that'll be made in the first week of May?
May 3rd.
May 3rd.
Thank you.
Yep. Draft decision, variance application for 92 Point Breeze Road. Draft decision, variance application for 92 Point Breeze Road.
Would you like me to walk through this?
Yes, if you would, please.
Okay, format you're familiar with, background, which is all the procedural information that is required. It was held by Zoom meeting, March 1st. Here's a list of the documents that were used. Your applicant is Dave Chappell and Cynthia Osowski. Here we get into the findings, F1 through F8, outline documents you received and the discussion at the hearing with the applicant. To refresh your memory, it's a pre-built shed. I will note that the written application for the variance indicated that he wanted a five-foot setback off the front yard and four feet over from the, four feet from the side yard, five feet from the front yard. However, the plan that was submitted with the application shows a seven-foot. We did ask the building commissioner in advance of the meeting starting. I asked him which of those two numbers are before the board, because he discussed five feet here. It is on his written application. The building commissioner said five feet. But it is, has to be noted here that there is a discrepancy in the application. The asphalt driveway, you had a conversation about the grassy area. Why couldn't it move over? Why couldn't it move back? Couldn't move back. We've got slope. Couldn't move over because it's his preference to have it on the asphalt so that there's still more room to park a car next to the shed. We talked about slope. We talked about hardship. He had, you know, purchased a pre-built shed and when he got out there, he discovered that's when he needed the variance. You did review properties in the area to show that there are similar garages, or not similar pre-built garages, but garages close to, if not on, the property lines in the area. I can pull up a map if that helps you. Building Commissioner is the only town department that submitted comments noting that it fits the area. Lots are so steep and built out that they have to hug the road. And that is findings F1 through F8. And then you get in to nine. A point of procedure, because this is for two variances, one for the front yard, one for the side yard, what you'll need are findings for each. So each one of these will require a finding, one for each front and side yard setback, and then a motion for each, because this is basically a dual application. If for some reason the one of the setbacks fails, this would become two separate decisions. I would have to break them apart based on your motion. So if, if you fail one, this becomes two decisions and they would then be split out. So, unique site conditions, hardship, this, we've got blank areas for you to fill in, any findings you want, the standard conditions here, you would have to, and the first one, if you want to jointly combine them, you could specify the setback distances specifically here, you know, then it's very simple. The mod, any modification or any change would require a new application to the board, file with the registry, and then the period of validity. And then you'd have to vote for me to sign the decision or decisions.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to accept findings F1 through F8 as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion. And this, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Should we clarify with the owner about the, the, the set, yeah?
We can't take any other public comment.
That's totally fine.
It's up for the board. Unfortunately, that's, once the hearings close, that would be a violation of Massachusetts zoning procedural laws, unfortunately. So you can't. You don't have to be here. You can't say anything, unfortunately. You're just an observer. But yeah, we can't, although it seems silly, we can't ask you whether you want five or seven. I think that what, according to the building commissioner, the building commissioner said is that the five feet would be what we would decide, although this board does have the ability to, to change that setback if it so chooses.
Yep, that was it.
So is there a motion and a second on the findings? Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Fales?
Yes.
Mr. Piattar?
Yes. All right. Unique site conditions. I suppose if this board wants to, this would be the appropriate time to talk about whether we want to rule on five or seven feet or to make a separate setback. I believe it was the intent of the applicant from looking at the, we're talking, I'm talking about the distance from the road to, for five. Personally, I don't see any issue with that, that setback. So I'm comfortable. So is there any other opinions to change that setback? No?
What was the original?
There was, there was nothing there.
Nothing there.
Nothing there. There, he put five on his application. There was seven feet on his hand-sketched site, site plan. It would be seven at his closest point, narrowing out to eight. So I'm assuming if that's correct, it would be probably five, maybe the eight, I mean, five to maybe the six, if that's correct, if that's how the road slopes. But I'm okay with five. And obviously, the applicant could go to seven if the shed is smaller. Okay. Addressing the five feet from the road and unique site conditions, I'll find that the topography of the land is significantly sloped so that the applicant is forced to place this shed within five feet of the road, you know, within that side yard, within that front yard setback. Would anybody else care to make a finding on the five-foot setback from the road as it relates to unique site conditions?
I would just agree with it that, that neighborhood there, everything's basically on the road. So I think it would fit in.
Okay. All right. Any other findings? All right. Is there a motion to find that the applicant has demonstrated that there are unique site conditions as it relates to the five-foot setback from the front yard?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Fales?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes. Okay. On the four feet from the, still looking at unique conditions, but this time we're looking at the four feet from the side yard. If I recall, and this is my finding, the applicant said he could not shift the shed further into the yard because it would require more grading. It's my opinion, and obviously looking at the, his hand-sketched, that he has 27 feet there. So I don't believe that would require much grading to shift that shed 10 feet away from the, the side yard. I understand why the applicant wants to put the shed within that 10-foot buffer, you know, four feet from the side yard, but, because it's the most convenient. It's the most aesthetically appealing. Unfortunately, aesthetically appealing is not a reason for unique site conditions and for hardship. That's just my own opinion as I interpreted the application. So that was my finding. Would anybody else care to make a finding?
I, I'm familiar with the layout and if, and I'm just speaking on hardship stuff because that's where, if he shifts the shed, he loses his driveway and replacing his driveway would be a real hardship, especially with the contour of his land. So holding him closer to his side yard is less of an impact for his yard.
Okay. No, that's fair.
Yeah.
That's fair.
I'll agree with this there.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Any other findings? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to find that the applicant has demonstrated that there are unique site conditions?
I'll make that motion.
Is this for the, for the four-foot?
This is for the four-foot from the sideline, yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
So this is, this, this is, was be voting a four-foot setback?
Right, from the side yard, yes.
Okay. Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Fales?
Yes.
Mr. Piattar?
No.
Okay.
All right. Hardship. So we'll take the five feet from the road first. And I'll find that there is a, there would be a hardship in requiring the applicant to comply with a larger setback from the road because he would have to do, have a financial investment to regrade his yard. Would anybody else care to make a finding? Okay. Is there a motion to find that the applicant has demonstrated a hardship that requires a five-foot setback from the front yard?
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Fales?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes.
Okay.
Four foot, now addressing the four-foot side yard setback, I'm of the opinion it wouldn't require a substantial hardship or otherwise to move the shed 10 feet off of the side yard setback because it's an existing driveway that's already been graded, in my opinion. I do respect other people's opinions and I'm not trying to sway anybody. I just want to say, you know, reasonable minds can differ. Reasonable minds can differ. It's just my own and I won't, obviously I won't hold it against anybody. So, not to be contentious or anything, but would anybody else care to make a separate finding?
I'm gonna go with, with the first part. Having him move it, this significant grading over there, he would have to, it's a real hardship.
Okay, fair enough. All right. Is there a motion to find that the applicant has demonstrated a hardship requiring a four-foot setback from his side yard?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion. Is there, actually, Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Excuse me, Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
And Mr. Fales?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
No.
Okay.
Public good. I think here, we, there's no need to separate the, the two applications. We can probably do this under one motion because we're just stating whether or not a shed will substantially, will be a substantial detriment to the public good by creating dust, debris, noise, et cetera. So in considering both the five-foot and the four-foot setbacks, I'll find that the construction of a shed will not be a substantial detriment to the public good because it won't create excessive dust, noise, debris, or otherwise. Would anybody else care to make a separate finding? All right. Is there a motion to find there is not a substantial detriment to the public good for the four-foot setback from the front yard and the, I mean, the five-foot setback from the front yard and the four-foot setback from the side yard?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Fales?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
Yes. Zoning and nullification are substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the Town of Webster zoning bylaws. I'll find here for both the five-foot and four-foot setbacks that the construction of a shed does not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent and purpose of the bylaw because sheds are in allowed use. Would anybody else care to make a separate finding? All right. Is there a motion to find that the five-foot front yard setback and four-foot side yard setback do not nullify or substantially derogate from the Town of Webster zoning bylaws?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Okay, Mr. Fales?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Piattar?
Yes. All right. Conditions. You highlighted the seven foot?
Yes, let's, yeah, there it is, down the bottom. Yes, here we go. So the condition one is where you're going to specify the front yard setback, right, the four, yeah, the front yard setback. You've already voted upon the four-foot side yard, but the front yard, again, because there was a discrepancy application, this is where you're gonna want to clarify five feet. So I can make the adjustment on the conditions to reflect this as being five feet. And the other conditions are pretty straightforward. If they're, you know, if he gets out there and moves it and it's three feet in the side yard, that's a new violation. So this, you know, clarifies exactly what you're approving. And then it's all the other standard conditions.
All right. Is there a motion to clarify C1 to state that the setback from the front yard shall be no less than five feet?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Fales?
Yes.
Mr. Piattar?
Yes.
So you're at the point where you're going to vote on whether or not to grant the variance.
Okay. Is there a motion to grant the variance with the conditions based on the information received throughout the public hearings and the findings stated herein for the five yards, the five-foot setback from the road?
I'll make that motion.
And did you want to do them both together or do you want to do them separately?
Both.
You want to do them, okay, we can do them both, for the five yard, for the five feet from the road and from the five, four feet from the sideline.
Okay.
I'll still make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay. Just for the record, I'll state that because I voted no on two of the elements for the four feet from the sideline, I would have to vote to deny this variance application because we're taking them both at once. So I'd have to be a no for both.
All right. So in that particular, in that particular case, well, it's a supermajority vote.
Yep. He'd still survive. The applicant still survives.
Procedurally, do, I mean, do you want to proceed with one motion or you want to break it into two?
I think procedurally, it's probably better to take two.
Okay.
Just because I'm a yes on the, on the five feet from the road.
Okay. All right. They can stay in one document. Okay, because of the supermajority. So, Mr. Canoyer, do you want to withdraw your motion?
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay. All right. So now you're back at square one.
All right. So is there a motion to grant the five-foot variance with the conditions, five-foot variance from the road with the conditions based on the information received throughout the public hearings and the findings stated?
I'll make that motion. I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Fales?
Yes.
Mr. Piattar?
Yes. All right. Is there a motion to grant the variance for a four-foot side yard setback based, with conditions based on the information received throughout the public hearing, hearing and the findings stated herein?
I'll make that motion. I'll second that motion.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Fales?
Yes.
And Mr. Piattar?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Fales?
Yes.
Mr. Piarro?
No.
And now, you need to authorize, unless you'd like to come to the office and sign this yourself.
All right. Is there a motion to direct Ms. Morgan to sign the decision on behalf of the board?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Canoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Fales?
Yes.
And Mr. Piarro?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
What was that?
No, everything, it was approved. It was approved. So, I dissented with the, on the four-foot side yard, having to take a unbiased view at it and what I believe, from what I've heard. I dissented on that, but you received four yes votes, so that survives because you could have, I believe you could have got two no's. And there was, and on the five-foot from the road, you got all unanimous votes, so you are, you have to file, there's, it'll be a decision, it'll be signed, filed with the clerk, and you have to file that with the registry of deeds within 30 days.
Twenty, this is a 20-day appeal period. You'll get a letter with the outline of the next steps.
Yep.
All right?
Yep. So, you can order your shed and you can have it in for the summer.
Awesome.
All right. You're welcome.
Bye, guys.
All right. Is there any other business that we have? We will not vote on 30 Point Pleasant until May. May, that will be May 3rd. Yes. Town staff works fast, but they don't work that fast. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn until Tuesday, May 3rd at 6:00 PM?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, let's make this easy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Okay. Will I turn off the microphones?